The City Council Committee on Committee of the Whole met in Council Chambers on June 21st, 2023 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below. For the purpose of discussing the framework for the tenant protection ordinance and a presentation in regards to a flood ordinance. This meeting will be held in City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Mass. On the second floor. In person shall be the primary method for the public of accessing the meeting. We do have a secondary method of public access available this evening. Some more technologically feasible through Zoom. For below and for remote access, the link is posted in the webinar or on the agenda. You may see our cameras are kind of funny this evening, but we're doing our best to allow the remote attendees to hear and participate as well. So members of the Committee of the Whole, we have myself, we have Councillor Marsillo, Councillor Merkel, Councillor Varela here in chambers. We also have Councillor Dominguez and Councillor Hathworth joining us remotely. Abstinent, we have Councillors McCarthy, Councillors Watsonfeld, Councillor Cohen, Councillor Rzeszuski, Councillor McLean. And that's it. So thank you all for joining us this evening. We also have from the City of Salem, we have Casey Moscos, the Senior Planner, who will provide us an update on the tenant protection ordinance. Last year, too full Amanda joined us here in Council Chambers, I believe that was in the fall in November, and provided us with an update of the tenant protection ordinance. We had some questions and comments and feedback on those, which you sort of kind of provided a memo for us, as well as a presentation for that kind of follow-up to our conversation from November. So I know you have a presentation prepared for us this evening. If you're good, I will just throw it over to you to start that. And just a reminder, you do need to speak, that you can move the mic closer to you. Thank you. Good evening. Cassie Moscos, I'm here from the Department of Planning and Community Development to talk about the condo conversion ordinance, your framework for the tenant protection ordinance. Last November, management of the whole is here to talk to you about this ordinance class. And you guys, as council staffs, did have some questions and concerns and feedback on that, so we're going to touch back on all those points. So here is our first. Here's our quick outline. We're going to talk about outreach, the right of first refusal, relocation fee for vacant units, the condo review board, rental protections that are already in place, and a quick update on home loan petition, and then some time for comments and questions. So one of the questions that the Council, the Committee of the Whole had back in November is, what was the plan to notify renters and landlords that this discussion is taking place, that this ordinance might go into effect? And staff has been working on a fairly robust outreach plan, we're partnering with the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator. We've already mailed out over 8,000 pieces of literature to landlords and tenants to get feedback on the draft ordinance. The Neighborhood Stability Coordinator is working on a landlord blog for the fall, so we'll be planning to present some material there. We're also going to be working on an FAQ page on the Imagine Salem website, which is the landing page that was in the literature that was already mailed out, and is kind of the depository for this ordinance and all that outreach that's been done. We have been talking about doing a second large mailing, a little probably a little bit more targeted at landlords specifically, to also include not just information about this, but other relevant information and work that the city is doing that is relevant to landlords. So that is about the outreach portion. There was another question, a discussion about potential grace period. And the working group that discussed this specifically, they did have a lot of thoughts on it, and one of the main thoughts being that there should not be an additional grace period line. The Beautiful Housing Trust Board has been talking and working on this ordinance for a long time, so that has been out there. We have mailed out a lot of literature already. We have had multiple public meetings on it, we're continuing to have public meetings. We are trying to get this information out there. And they did also feel that sometimes grace periods allow for some confusion about when things actually are going to affect them and like cause rushes and things like that. So the working group did feel that they were going to should go into effect when it is passed by the Council. So they did not make any changes to the draft ordinance there. The next subject that the committee discussed was the right of first refusal. And when does it start? How is it priced? Is it priced before or after improvements? The draft ordinance says that for most tenants, it's 120 days for when they are notified that the landlord is intending to convert, or 180 days in the case of are disabled or are protected classically disabled and low moderate income tenants. In terms of how is it priced? It should be priced that the units do be sold in as is condition. So they don't get to estimate how much the improvements that they might do after the tenant is gone, how much that would be, and try to sell it for that. It has to be in as is condition. And then, so yeah, is it priced before or after? And then there was a question about when does it expire? And if the waiting period, after that waiting period, the tenant is then in their good place to offer, to make an offer. The right of first refusal expires 90 days after the 120 days, which is a little confusing. But I think it's fair to just kind of make sure that they get, there's like a cooling down period per se, and then they can go gung ho on accepting offers. They still can't actually kick the renter out after that. But at that point, the renter, the tenant would have to compete with the general public sale. However, probably still would the landlord potentially consider that tenants offer as they would be done with sale, they wouldn't have to go through a waiting period or anything There was a question on vacant units, and if a relocation fee would have to be retroactively paid to a tenant that was previously vacated, their unit, if the unit had been empty for at least a year, they would not have to go back and pay their previous tenant for relocation fee. And I'm just trying to think, can I say that math? That's my maybe is not saying you do the night of the moment math. But the concern was landlords kicking and evading their unit, kicking their unit, kicking their tenants out to avoid a two-year waiting period, because then they don't have to wait for a year. Our housing production, and the Salem Housing, Housing Report Act showed that the average rent in Salem was about $2,000 a month. And so if a landlord had a three-unit building, and they have their tenants for the full two years, that'd be about $144,000 or so on average in rent. Rent for one year, in that book thing, would be about $72,000. And the relocation cost for those three units would be $15,000, not $15,000, because it's $5,000 per tenant. So, so as you can see, it's still is beneficial to the landlord to keep those tenants in the unit while they are going through the type of conversion process. It does not, it is not beneficial for the landlords to evict their tenants just for their lease that's sitting empty for a year, to avoid that relocation cost. There is also a request for updated data regarding, especially around other conversions for by longtime homeowners or new landlords. And while that information is available at the registry of deeds, it is very time-consuming and tedious to track down that information and then put it into a form that is easy to analyze and make transcripts out of. And staff currently does not have that capability to update that information at this time. There was also a suggestion, there's a condo review board that is associated with this ordinance. There is a suggestion that it would be on a specifically A2B4300 unit. And the working group did discuss this idea of changing the makeup of the board, and they wanted to express concern about difficulty finding members to participate on this board. I think we all know that there are vacancies on most of our city boards across town, and to narrow the scope of who we are looking for even more might be two words to actually fill the board. So, you know, the review board says members shall be familiar with the housing needs and issues of the City of Salem, and shall include two homeowners, two tenants, and one other being disabled for a lower moderate income person, who may either be a homeowner or a tenant, and of which at least one shall be a member of the Beautiful Housing Trust Board. So the homeowner aspect of it is covered, and while a single-family owner might not have the same concerns or perspective as a three-family or dual-class owner, they might still have an eye on the housing needs and issues of the City of Salem, they might still be a member of the protected class, because we don't want to limit who, what particular homeowners are on the board. That was the big concern of the, of the working group. So they did not recommend any changes to the review board makeup. Some other questions that were out there, what other protections exist for tenants? The state of Massachusetts has some basic tenant protections, and additionally, there are, there are causing laws, our home buyer programs, and there's some resources to share with tenants. Yes, that is part of the draft ordinance and the communication that is provided to tenants when they're required that their landlord is going to be converting. There was a question about whether the tenants would have to do any reporting back to the landlords on their home search, or the working group felt very strongly that that was an additional burden on the tenants that shouldn't be placed on them, that they are already looking, potentially facing displacement, and to also have to have them report back in to their landlord, that they might live at three houses to sit here, would just be extrovert. So. And then the last question was, is the permit is held with the property, or if the owner is held with the property, that's how it's drafted in the ordinance? If the property owner wants to sell the property while they're in the middle of this process, the permits, the conditional permit and the final permit stay with the property, the new owner could not have to start that process over, but it doesn't, doesn't move the clock on the process from one end to the other. And then, very quickly, the last home loan petition did expire in state legislature, so we didn't have to refile it. So it has been referred to the House, the Joint House Committee on Housing, and in April, Senate concurred for that, but it has not moved any further. So if you do have an interest in supporting this, you can reach out to some of her lovely staff, Mr. Cruz's office, and let them know that you would like to see this bill advanced. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm in the hope for comments and questions.
Thank you, Cassie. Councillor Merkel, and Councillor Marsillo?
Is that the way? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all of the work that's gone into this. I know this, it's really taken quite an effort. I have a question about the condo review board. Just a little clarity of my understanding, what is their role? Do we already have a condo review board, and the other ones working through the ordinance? Or is that something that's going to be created? And if everything is really spelled out in the ordinance, then, you know, what would they be doing? And also, I know it is hard to fill boards these days, but I was wondering, since a lot of the renters have spent speaking, if anyone has spent speaking on the condo review board, if they just want more information on that. Thank you.
So the condo review board, as it's drafted in the ordinance, is a, appeals more to the process, because the permitting process is fairly, you need to do X, Y, and Z. Tenants need to do X, Y, and Z, as long as everybody has done those things, it is an administrative permit that will be administered by the Neighborhood Stability Coordinator, or where it's at the moment. And then if you go to the landlord or the tenant, and say, the landlord did not provide me with this documentation, I don't know what's going on, they would file an appeal, and the condo review board would share that appeal. So they're probably just going unassisted, just having somebody who is Spanish-speaking would probably be very important, that has enough in common. Thank you for bringing that up. Probably the review board to see if they would like to consider adding that potential requirement.
Thank you, Chair Stott. So I understand that. So it's really to oversee and make sure these condo conversions, that everything in the ordinance is adhered to, like everybody's following the protocol and doing what they're supposed to do, notifications and all that. Okay, thank you, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie, if you mind, if you go with the presentation, stop my screen. Thank you. Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair. Cassie, did you have a number for that, though, for the whole petition?
I did. It is H3722.
Is that the one that we just heard that is going to exist and has a committee here to date? I haven't checked in a couple days, but I'll have a look for it. I'm just going to just keep going back to the Beautiful Housing Trust Board and check it.
I have one quick question, a similar question as Councillor Merkel's on the board in the meeting. I'm trying to remember, did we see it actually? We didn't see the ordinance yet, have we?
You have not seen it yet.
I'm trying to remember if I, how it read or how it was written. But the two homeowners, two tenants, one elderly, that the homeownership language makes me a little nervous that we're pigeonholing it even more? Like, how do we have to prove that you're like on a deed to a home, or can you just be like a non-renter? Like, I do think we need to have tenants and renters on there, but then classifying a homeowner, like, that's a very specific definition to be a homeowner. And then everyone's on a deed to their house that they live in, perhaps without paying rent, you know what I mean? So I just would be cautious of that language when we're writing it. I don't know if other communities have run into that. I mean, that's a very, like, specific. It looks a deed all day long, so it's fine, thank you, but.
Councillor Marsillo?
I agree. I think all you need to do is specify at least two tenants.
At least two renters, yeah.
Yeah, two renters, yeah.
Yeah.
Make the rest take care of itself.
Any other questions from the Councillors in chamber, or Councillors remote? If not, I will open it to members of the public, anyone in chambers or remote. If you're trying to answer, I just use the raised hand motion. Hopefully, I will allow you to talk. If you'd like to have your name and address for the record, you can say your name and address, and your comment, your question.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Back to the agenda, say hello. My question is to comment on part of the Beautiful House, or else part of the group that pulled over creating this ordinance from scratch, but someone also leading into ordinances that already exist on the books from Cambridge, some are local, and others successful in these counties, and having women that is ordering. So none of this is really brand-new, we're different in that, but we don't, in many ways here, I don't know what that deal, it's on our minds. This is not something that is foreign to any municipality that I'm involved with, or just learning from a lot of the folks that have done a lot of the work, and trying to implement this a little bit more to meet to the state of sale. And so I think some of the questions that I have not had addressed here today are really excellent, and hopefully the Council can, you know, really consider the feedback of the group that the folks that put this together, if you consider this in real depth, the modifications that were asked or to firstly consider, did not really feel warranted at the time. And I think that this group was just recommended if you actually, us who were oriented, I think, you know, ask somebody to open that, and this is a really good idea, to just, instead of excluding, just making it a simple, new, clear language, and instead of having homeowners and renters just have one headboard, and the rest will feel itself. But I just want to remind folks, this is a really one I, I was a condo owner until recently, in the Bronx, and I built in West Chappa, and that building wasn't gentrified. I was the last Latino person to live in that building, at 62, 60, 62 Perkins. It used to be a property that was 100% Latino, 100% Long Island, 100% renter, and it is currently completely no minorities. That condo was converted a while back, before we even had really easy to access data for. So Cassie and others in the same provider, and I said, David, I didn't mind our complex was on that list. There are a lot of complexes that are today condos, that are really not even on that list, speaking of which, and we're seeing that, I saw that condo go up. I was even by my condo, and be really lucky to buy for 205 in the late, the price that doesn't exist anymore in Salem. But again, I was the last Latino to live there. My neighbors on stairs were Latinos as well, luckily it was another Brazilian too, so it hit with the bump a little bit, who were gone now. We, we got priced out, and somebody strung that neighborhood in because of our life situations, and we weren't able to find a stable room. So I just want to remind folks that this is super, like, people aren't getting priced out, people are getting moved out by kind of the merchants of all the city. This has been happening, this continues to happen, and I know the meaning of it, will soon enough be the actual full language, once we have that ready, and especially if all that's happening, if they will speak well, that they need to actually have some position that we've, we've asked to go to two families, or relax, to stay for a while, I might write. But this is a really robust ordinance. This has a lot of really smart people, learning from a lot of other really smart people, way smarter than me, even including former Councillors from the majority of the media who gave these efforts. So this is a really robust ordinance, and it's not going to go in the dust and forward, you all can really take this into really good consideration. It's, it's so good that you're being ready to move forward, and hopefully our state legislature will also take some action, so I can keep pushing on to that. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, I don't see any other members of the public with their cameras. Any options from the committee for this topic? Councillor Marsillo?
Thank you, Chair. I would just refer back to the Council and the be received and filed.
Councillor Marsillo, most of this be received and filed? Second, if it counts, Councillor Varela? Sorry, I'm just trying to think of that, I'm just seeing. Because we are, we do use your overall call vote, so Councillors, to me, as a Councillor or a Board, we will be calling for the roll call vote, for the motion to be referred back to Council with the presentation and Kathy to be received and filed. Councillor Marsillo?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Hathworth?
Yes.
And Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. I'll just mute myself. And no, and I am a S. So that is six member voting, six may affirmative, and the other is referred back to Council to be received and filed. I look forward to receiving the ordinance for review soon, I'm hoping. Okay.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, and I look forward to that date for the bill, hopefully this, and we'll all reach out to our Senator Thomas. Cool, thank you so much. And up next this evening, we have an update on presentation in regards to a flood ordinance. So this is another conversation, we do not have an ordinance in front of us to review, but we do have an update on, I believe this is an update on the working group, and the flood ordinance is being drafted, which will be discussed soon in front of Council. So this is a good time, this Committee of the Whole, to get an update and ask any questions we might have moving on to this other topic. We have Tom Devine from the City of Salem joining us, and we have a representative from Fields and Thomas. Thanks for joining us, and I believe, are you logged in, or I probably need to come up you? Okay. Andrew Gorman? Ready to film, so you should be able to screen share, it does take a second.
Would you like Tom to introduce us to the presentation?
Great, thank you.
From the housing crisis to the climate crisis.
Really is a tale.
Just tell me if you're not there to be the way you should be, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay. Tom Devine, Senior Planner for the Salem Planning Department. I'm here with Acting City Engineer, Depp Duhanelle, and Stacy Binay, and Andrew Gordon of Fields and Thomas. Planning Director Tom Daniel is in the virtual audience list tonight. I want to thank the Council for the opportunity to be here on the agenda tonight, and for just being engaged on all the climate work that the city's doing. I also want to go on record to express my gratitude to the working group that we have. It turns out that we have a working group that's really engaged and thoughtful and committed to creating an ordinance that results in resiliency for buildings in a way that is appropriate for Salem. Councillors Marsillo and McCarthy are on board as a group. A little bit of background before I say a little bit about what we're hoping to accomplish tonight. I think that everyone in this room knows that climate change is going to pose major threats to the city in the coming decades. More days of extreme heat, increased precipitation, increased frequency and intensity of storms, and of course, more coastal flooding. The city is responding to these threats with a variety of programs, policies, and infrastructure projects to both reduce carbon emissions that contribute to climate change, and to adapt to the impacts of climate change. The challenge we face is really doing this in a way that's mindful of all the other overarching calls the city has for housing, and clean, or preservation, transportation, and development, to name a few. I want to say a little bit about where the work we're doing now, this into all the climate work they've done in the past decade or so. The 2014 Salem Climate Assessment and National Plan kicked off, it's been almost a decade now of climate work. And I'm counting 12 or so things we've done where there's been some outreach and education. And the outreach and education that Andrew's going to describe for this specific project is, are you guys missing something?
I'm so sorry, I just catched up.
I'm sorry, and I think I went a little bit out of order too, that hasn't helped. Andrew's going to describe some of the outreach we're doing specifically for this project that builds on all this climate education outreach we've done over the past few years. And I don't want to say much in detail of all these other projects we've done in the past, but I want to have a couple that lead directly to the work we're doing now. You all remember the floodlights ordinance that the Council adopted pretty recently. That segues into this work, because it primarily was focused on protecting ecological resources, but we were understanding as we wrapped that work up, that if we're going to protect human health, safety, welfare, and the town, zoning ordinance for flood resiliency, and that's what, that's what this is. In addition... In addition, the Alpanto Resilient Together Plan resulted in some recommendations, including the specific recommendation to amend our current flood ordinance to incorporate future climate risk. And that's this ordinance that we're working on here. But overall, I guess it's just important to note that this ordinance doesn't solve everything. It's just one tool. You know, climate change is such a big threat that there's no one single solution that solves it all. Um, and in terms of what we have in mind for tonight, um, I know some members are involved in the working group. I think the majority of the councilors attended the April public forum and some people have reached out directly to me. So what we covered tonight will be familiar to, to some of you. But I think it's important that we are here tonight to present the likely elements of the ordinance directly to council now. So we need to get some feedback, hear your questions and comments. So that when you do come to the council in the near future with a draft ordinance, it will respond to the questions, comments and concerns you have. And lastly, I'll say that we, we're trying to be efficient with the council's time. So we, we have a careful structure of this presentation in a way that's efficient with your time. And, um, we use some opportunities to pause frequently. Um, I guess I would suggest this is a lot of elements to go through. If any one of them leaks a lot, especially we might want to park it soon for the end after we go through both the easier angles. Uh, that said, I'm going to hand it over to Andrew.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee for continuing to involve Fields and Thomas in these projects as you continue to investigate opportunities for climate resiliency. Um, we're going to go over a brief introduction of the project, the two prompts that we're working with. Uh, as Thomas tried, a good summary of our public outreach. We'll go through, um, some of the flood hazard overlay district decision points. In addition to the climate resiliency overlay district decision points. And we'll explain what those two are in a moment, the next steps for the project, and then we'll have the whole discussion. So on April tenth, uh, we had a public forum. Many of the members had attended, um, this.
Can you just, can you just speak right into?
Right into my, oh, thank you. Thank you. On April tenth, we did have that public forum. Um, and in addition to that, uh, Tom self-presented a, uh, committee meeting, the Sustainability, Energy and Resiliency Committee. Uh, Tom has also been keeping the project website up to date. That's publicinput.com/salemflood. Is that it?
Salem FHOD.
Salem FHOD, publicinput.com/salemfhd. And one of the things we've been trying to accomplish there is really chronicling the path of the decision-making process for the working group. Both through meeting minutes and, uh, video footage of things like our public forum, links to other entities like the Salem South Coast workshop has been part of our discussion with, uh, the Woods Hole group mapping that we'll talk about later in the presentation. And in addition, uh, many of the, uh, slideshows have been translated into Spanish to make it more accessible for the community. So the, the two prompts that we're looking at in this project, uh, first, it's, uh, section eight point one Salem Zone Ordinance. An update to what is the flood hazard overlay district. This is, um, essentially what the city needs to accomplish to achieve its minimum compliance for FEMA insurance purposes. Uh, and it's based on current FEMA mapping. So when we think about this blue tile here, the FHOD, we're thinking about current FEMA flood zones. So what is the current one hundred year flood zone looking like for the city of Salem? Whereas when we enter this more forward-thinking component of our project, the climate resiliency overlay district, we're looking at the ways that we can interrogate a future horizon of a flood zone. More specifically, a flood zone that we're predicting to exist in the year twenty seventeen. So in, in the first phase of this project, the flood hazard overlay district, um, we specifically looked at a model ordinance that was prepared by UMass Department of Conservation and Recreation. The entity responsible for preparing a model, by a law, model ordinance. We did a compare and contrast of where the city was and where we felt some of the gaps were. And admittedly, some of the work was a little custodial in nature. Um, for instance, we have a reference to an old wetlands map in section eight point one point two, something that wouldn't necessarily be akin to, uh, the wetland delineation that you would see if you're a conservation commissioner process. So we did use the opportunity to go through with a fine tooth comb the existing, um, wetland ordinance, or sorry, the zoning ordinance. And look carefully at opportunities to improve net clarity and make sure it was consistent with the current requirements for FEMA. And I think, uh, including a slide that shows a tile of a FEMA flood zone in the city. Because when we were talking about these zoning ordinances, we're not just talking about, um, the horizontal space. It's not just a log on the map. We're also talking about, um, elevations. We have elevation ten here for zone eight. This is that FEMA hundred year flood plain. And elevation eleven on the western side over here. So when we're talking about the flood hazard overlay district, it's, it's a district that is defined by these horizontal boundaries and further established by those elevations. When somebody wants to put a building in this flood zone, there are certain elevations that their base floor has to design to. So that's the FEMA standards. So some notable decision points for the first half of this project, um, one thing the city is responsible for is designating a floodplain administrator. There was much deliberation as to who in City Hall would have this role. Um, and one of the things that was looked at critically was availability of resources, um, engineering expertise. And, um, we also wanted to structure it such a way as it wouldn't just be this one person who all the decisions would fall to. They would have the ability to pull in third-party review or internal engineering review as needed. So we all ultimately landed on the building commissioner. FEMA requires that there is some permitting mechanism through which these decisions are rendered. And we've decided to keep it as a planning board special permit. And we've also looked at what other communities were doing with their flood hazard overlay districts. Um, the city may be very familiar with what Boston did with their working V zones, which are velocity zones. That is not necessarily a direction that we might with this. Um, so we're not necessarily proposing a prohibition in V zones. Although work within floods, V zones will still be subject to the flood hazard overlay district and the wetlands ordinance and the potential C rod that is adopted. So stepping away from those, those minimum FEMA standards, we really asked ourselves the question, how do we encourage design that is resilient to future increased flood events? So what design horizon do we select? What, um, opportunities are there? Is it a spatial question? So why adopt such a particular program? Why adopt the climate resiliency overlay district? The intent here is to recognize the threat of future flooding events resulting from climate change, including sea level rise, precipitation and other climatic forces. It's intended to promote climate resiliency in an adaptable design that addresses future flood risks through innovative solutions that consider future flood events. And what we would like to present to the committee of the whole this evening are some ongoing decision points, um, that we've essentially structured the remainder of the draft around. And, uh, we're very excited to take your feedback on this evening. Major point is the applicability threshold. So what specific projects would be subject to this future, uh, design elevation? What uses would be allowed below the sea level rise design elevation? Um, could it be parking? Could it be residential circulation? How do we treat parking below a sea level rise design elevation? Considerations for non-residential spaces? How we handle waiver requests? So what level of elasticity there needs to be in the parking process? How ordinance tackles heightened setback provisions? Kind of a tricky one. How do we encourage innovative design? I know it's hard word to define and doubt. Another subject of much deliberation, as you will see some of the later mapping, there are a lot of historic properties in Salem and a lot of these properties in the district itself overlaps with FEMA flood zones and future flood metrics. How are we going to handle those? How is applicable to exterior grounds? So is, is it just the building instructions themselves or is it something that we need to worry about landscaping? How do we handle visual impacts? The relationship to site plan reviews. So a large permitting conversation was undertaken as to what the appropriate mechanism was in ultimately the mapping that we are, uh, landing on. So for our applicability thresholds, um, we, we broke it up into two categories. Uh, and we defined substantial renovation, um, as is so defined in the State Building Code for consistency. When something is, uh, an improvement that is fifty percent or greater than the value of the existing structure, as well as new construction. So for residential units that are five units or fewer, residential structures that are five units or fewer, they would not necessarily be subject to provisions of the C rod for substantial renovations. But for new constructions, they would be. For residential units, residential structures with six or more units, they would be subject to the provisions of the C rod. And similarly for new constructions, detached accessory structures. And this is something that we went through and tried to carefully define in the ordinance. Um, these would not necessarily be subject to those, whether it's like a shed, free garden tools, things like that. And non-residential structures, both substantial renovation and new construction, we're looking to, uh, be subject to the climate resiliency overlay district. So uses below sea level rise design flood elevation. This is a graphic that we thought of from, uh, Boston's Guidance and Planning Document for their resiliency overlay district. And I think it's quite illustrative, um, in terms of showing a designed flood elevation and uses below, um, the primary occupied floor of a residential building, specific to parking in this scenario. So we're looking to encourage residential circulation and storage. Um, certain non-residential uses when project proponents can, uh, provide water dry flood proofing and certain building mechanicals. So those, uh, HVAC infrastructure components of the structure, um, so long as they can demonstrate that there's wet and dry flood proofing available. So again, those would be subject to planning board review. Parking below the sea level rise design flood elevation. Uh, we are thinking about this as a conditional use below the sea level rise design flood elevation. And again, similar to the previous discussion, we want to, um, encourage proponents to require that flood proofing water dry be proposed. This was a, a large topic among the working group. And, um, the way the draft is structured currently is to, before owners explore parking, we want to encourage them to look at ways to, uh, raise the grade, um, to bring outside of the, uh, the flood zone. Considerations for non-residential spaces, as you just saw with the applicability thresholds. Um, all non-residential structures for substantial renovations currently, um, would be subject to the C rod. Um, however, we are investigating if there are certain de minimis activities that might trick, uh, trip the wires for that financial threshold. Um, if there's a way to include them as, um, the potential exemption. So that is something that's still being explored and we're going to be discussing with the working group. We have a request, so we've, uh, thought very carefully about how to structure this. Um, we understand for an ordinance like this to be defensible, there must be some manner of a variance mechanism. Um, so we've arrived at a general waiver request where the applicant would have a high burden proof. Uh, and the audience for that burden would be the planning board. And there's specific criteria in the ordinance that they would want would have to respond to. So we'll have some waiver requests. We've also thought about what this means for height and setback provisions. Uh, we are specifically in this ordinance proposing that building heights be measured from the sea level rise design flood elevation. So for example, if, um, through the FHOD, um, the design elevation is, is ten, that the sea level rise design flood elevation is twelve, the building height would then be calculated from that, that twelve foot elevation. Um, but it must still comply with chapter ninety-one called the Waterfront Act. In terms of the way that the ordinance looks at, um, side yard setbacks and rear setbacks, we're looking to encourage creative thinking with circulation. So movement around to kind of achieve access. So, Councilor?
Can we just go back to that?
Absolutely.
Chapter ninety-one, can you just talk a little bit about what that means?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So chapter ninety-one, the Public Waterfront Act, I believe, and Stacy, you can help me correct me. Um, it, it has certain building height provisions baked into it that, um, I think project proponents are not allowed to exceed. So we could not inadvertently in this ordinance propose something that would conflict with, um, what the state mandate says is a limitation under chapter ninety-one. Does that make sense? Yeah, that's a really good question, though. Um, so in, in situations where a typical lane use exercise, we would try to avoid putting structures inside and rear garden setbacks when these are practical. We are proposing a little bit of relief or flexibility. Um, if somebody is looking to store, you know, flood management equipment, uh, flood protection equipment, um, that is enclosed and available if they need to be employed. Um, so we're looking creatively at the loss into a public. Other tricky, uh, one, the question of innovation. How do you, um, regulate something that might not exist yet? This is a discussion that the working group has had that Councilor Murillo has had excellent input on. Um, we want, we do want to be able to have a structure in there that encourages innovative thinking. Um, and we think that the best way to do that and to achieve it is to have it with language in the waiver section. Um, one of the options is they can demonstrate if the planning board is the arbitrator of that and decide if, uh, something that, that is innovative and creative that has not yet been formalized, um, would be those standards and would that be right for a waiver request? Okay, so our properties, um, again, this is a big part of the city of Salem. A significant overlap with the flood hazard overlay district and its proposed climate resiliency overlay district. Um, I know Tom has gone back and forth with the preservation planner. We've had discussions with city staff as to best approach. At one point in time, we were considering no exemption, but we were considering a blanket exemption. And I think what we've leaned on here is more, um, in line with the complexity that really is the way that these historic properties intersect with flood zones. Because we do want to encourage future resiliency planning. Specifically, uh, we're, we're thinking that this will exist as a waiver, a general waiver, rather than one of those higher bar, higher burden proof waivers that would exist in the ordinance. Um, specifically would apply to buildings that are in local historic districts, the National Register of Historic Places, or, uh, structures that are deemed historically significant by the Salem Historical Commission. And the idea is that there would be a pipeline of communication between the planning board and the Salem Historic Commission where they get solicited feedback when one of these properties is reviewed for a waiver request. So how does, uh, the ordinance apply to non-b buildings, to other site components that aren't necessarily structures? And the idea is that this, this C rod, the climate resiliency overlay district will not necessarily apply to these other site features we do with landscaping, things like that. However, um, these features may be regulated through other ordinances. For example, if you're in the climate resiliency overlay district, you are very, very likely in a regulated resource area, coastal land, subject to storm flowage. So you would be subject to the wetlands ordinance, you might be subject to the stormwater ordinance. And depending on the complexity of your smittle, you may also be subject to site manner review. So we, we felt there's a level of comfort with how much review is already ongoing with the exterior site features that we did keep the resiliency overlay district focused on the, uh, main building structures. Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, just to go back to that. So in the case of, um, a property that decides if they want to build a new driveway and parking area that's just hanging over the land, that's going to be caught by the stormwater ordinance?
Yeah, Tom, do you have a? Yeah, so it, it may be caught by the stormwater ordinance. And ideally, that's one in the city that I'm less conversant on. It would certainly be likely to be caught by both the wetlands ordinance and the Wetlands Protection Act, um, as, you know, coastal lands subject to storm flowage, marine lands subject to flooding. So there would be a, a conservation commission intersection with that.
That's only, that's only if it's within a hundred feet of the resource area, right? So that's, that's not a majority of the properties that would be in this district.
The majority of properties that are within the C rod are, are currently within a coastal flood zone already. There, there is an expansion. There are some properties that are not currently that would now be subject to this new, um, area. But the vast majority of the. but the vast majority of them are still within a resource area. I want to invite Tom to follow up on that.
I think Counselor Sello, there'd be some properties that would not be captured if there's, say, paving over or some currently purguous land. But there's a good deal of overlap between what would be the C-Rod overlay district and the current FEMA flood zone, so it's actually to the conservation commission review. We would add on or prefer this in our local wetlands ordinance, but it wouldn't capture everything. And I too have that conversation with the stormwater ordinance. I think we may have talked a little bit about how what we're doing now may inform a future update of the stormwater ordinance, to be sure it catches things like that. I may be going way beyond my wheelhouse here when I say that. I, I don't know that the, the question of paving property is especially relevant for protection against coastal flooding, when it's, when it's ocean floodwater, so it's coming onto a property that's connected with the ocean. A little bit of infiltration is not kind of holdback to the ocean. You might want to stop it here, but I'm going to get called out now, so getting away off.
That's a good question.
And I guess also, I'm generally advocating for this ordinance to be tightly focused on protecting buildings, their occupants, and their contents, but you know, this is a fully resolved with the working group, and I think there's a little bit more deliberation that's needed.
So what I would offer is that it's not the stormwater regulations per se, and there is an ordinance that can pave parking, create a parking lot for more than three vehicles, three vehicles or more, then you have to get permit through the city. So that would be a parking lot. It's not like if someone wanted to pave their driveway on a lot. And I think that Tom's point is well taken, that this ordinance, in particular when you are looking at the ocean, yes, we want to encourage as much infiltration as possible in general for gray water. We want every drop to go into the ground exactly where it falls if we can, but in this case, I'm not sure that we're capturing what we need to if they pave within an area that's going to get flooded by a state storm surge.
Thank you. Something we're also looking at are visual impacts. So this one special permit criteria we're envisioning is that there would be mechanisms to limit visual impacts if structures are raised, except that it is practical, whether it's something that can be encased rather than left open. And we recognize also that many of the projects would also be subject to design review board as well as the Historical Commission, given the overlap jurisdictions. And the relationship to site plan review, as we had mentioned, we're looking to keep this in the realm of a special permit with the planning board, so the C-Rod itself filing within the climate resilience C-overlay District, we're not envisioning would trigger site plan review. However, because of some of the unit thresholds, there would be some overlap, so a project might be doing this simultaneously with site plan review. So it might still be a large part of the permitting process, but by itself would not necessarily be a site plan review filing. And another topic has been the subject of much deliberation is what mapping we were using, and specifically, once we arrived at this 2070 number that was available to us, Woods Hole Group, looking at future flood events, what scenario that we're going to land on. So yeah, we're talking about 100-year flood plane that is approximated for year 2070. So the models that were available to us, still water model, the wave crest models, both of maximum wave height model and significant wave height. And I'm just going to show two photos before I invite Deb back up to the podium. So just so the committee has a border of magnitude, this is just one discreet area that shows the two different models that we're looking at. This is the still water model, which is not as dynamic as the wave crest that has a flood elevation in the High Street Park area of approximately 13.1 feet, whereas in the wave crest model, we're looking at a 14.2-foot height for the 100-year flood plane in the wave crest maximum scenario. So the point of departure between the models, in my view, from biosimilance mapping is not as large as the point of departure from the base FEMA mapping and the 2070 mapping. And a lot of these dots that we see on screen and in the map, how it opened, and those are the historic properties. So that's what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about the overlap and why we want to be sensitive to land use activities on historic properties. So I do want to invite Deb up if you have anything to say about the models. I believe Deb is kind of slitting through the Mass Coastal Zone Management Office. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, as a working group, had been dealing with two options. One was this still water mapping from the 2017 Mass Ostill mapping. That still water model, we were considering whether or not we should add free board to that. And free board is usually considered when you have a lot of unknowns, so maybe you say, okay, we're going to use this level, this elevation, and then we're going to add a free board to protect us against what waves might happen or elements that weren't considered in, say FEMA doesn't consider future conditions, FEMA doesn't consider sea level rise. So you would add a free board to a FEMA elevation because those elements are already baked into it. But the work done by Woods Hole Group has all of those considerations, it's a fully dynamic model based on physics from storms and how wind interacts with the water, et cetera. So in the still water elevation, you maybe would want to use a free board from the Woods Hole Group. They also offered the maximum wave crest elevation, and that was sort of where, for a while, I was leaning, because I didn't know there was this significant wave crest height. So the maximum one, what Woods Hole Group has told us is that that was really developed for Mass DOT, and it has to do with how the federal highway information, lots of bridges designed, and how that can pass the local board on the bridge. So their feeling was that, you know, it's obviously our decision as a city, but this significant wave height might be a better number to use for the elevations that can be swatted for the C-Rod areas. And that is less than the maximum wave crest height by a factor of, if you were to buy by 2.27. I don't know where the number comes from yet. I need to ask more questions on that, but it's just come to light that this is an option for us to be able to consider as part of the ordinance that we were considering, and this is the, the working group hasn't heard this yet. So this is the first time that we're talking about it as another option for consideration when we're developing the elevation that we want to use for the C-Rod.
I just asked, did everyone understand that? Yeah. So I think, could you explain free board and what you're trying to do? You're trying to set the minimum, the minimum height or the starting point for a building, correct? Like said, trying to make sure basically.
Yeah, so the bottom floor.
Yeah, the bottom floor, yeah.
Yeah, so that, we want to make sure that all the equipment and the living spaces are above that elevation. And so we have, at our disposal right now, three options to set that elevation for the C-Rod. And one of those elevations is still water, which doesn't consider the waves. The other one is mass wave crest elevation, which is the highest wave that would possibly happen. So that might be a little excessive. And the third option would be the significant wave crest. The free board could be added to still water if we wanted to try to account for waves, but that's a stagnant number versus the wave crest elevation or the significant wave crest elevation would allow for that number to vary across the land as would happen in a dynamic physical condition. Any better? Maybe, maybe figures and visuals would have been helpful.
Thank you, President Stott. So I kind of understand it. And designing for this ordinance, you're considering adding the extra height of the waves?
And yes, and so our couple of ways to do that is adding just a single number, stagnant number across the elevation that we're already set for the still water, or looking at the dynamic version, which would either be that maximum wave crest, which seems like it might be a little bit much because it's the highest storm, on the highest wave, or using a significant wave crest, so that it can vary across land, because obviously waves closer to the shoreline might be higher than waves when you get further, depending on the hydrodynamics of that.
Okay, so the different options are still being considered.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. So just to tee off of that, because I had no idea about these maps. So to me, it seems like this is kind of a moving number all across the city. Like, is this, how was that kept active? Like, how does, how will some property know what their elevation number is? Is there something that decides which maps we're using, which, it's kind of like similar to the wetland question, like, how do you know you're in a wetland resource area?
Yeah, so I think, I think this is what we're trying to establish, which mapping we're going to use. And then I imagine there'll be someone in the city who can tell proponents who are trying to do projects forward what that elevation is once we figure out, again, I don't know that, right? Once we figure out which mapping we want to use, then you'll be able to provide that information.
And is that mapping that we would choose, would that be like a dynamic livable thing that changes? Because I'm assuming we wouldn't choose a map that they have put on top of the city because these numbers change all the time, just like the, it's like a whole changing, right? Is it like a dynamic modeling system? Or is it just like this is the map? Or is it something like, I'm thinking like in 10 years, five years, three years, we're going to have to refresh and think again as to what are, what the numbers that we so delicately and carefully thought about? Are we going to have to do that on a regular basis to make sure that we're covered? Does that question make sense?
Yeah. Well, that's an excellent question. That's a question that the working group actually had a little on was, not how we, how do we have access to these, but I think part of our award of the Seattle Stock Coast Watch asks, you know, what opportunity is there in the future to revisit these? And ultimately, a zoning ordinance needs to, at least from my understanding, reference a static map, there needs to be a document that we can fall back on, some data for data that references elevation that a landowner could go to without any complexity and see, I am in this flood zone, this is the elevation that I have to worry about. So the way we're understanding it is that we do indeed have to have some mapping establishment associated with this, but as with climate change, this is a moving target that we are constantly interrogating. So there will always be an opportunity to then revisit the mapping as part of the future zoning ordinance. I think a really good example of that, and Tom has been exploring with the city of Boston, how they adopted their resilient C-overlay Districts, which is some similarities, some differences, but Boston, what they did is they went with the still water model plus free board, so that lower example that we were just talking about, because they did not necessarily have the wave crest elevation available to them at the time. So we're at a position now where, just in the time between when Boston updated the ordinance, and now as Salem is investigating, we have some more dynamic mapping available. So there would be opportunities in the future, and it could be as simple as an ordinance updates and change the mapping, but I know there's a long, limited answer, I hope, but I'll point it.
Just a follow-up on that.
Yeah.
These are the FEMA flood maps, or are these the Woods Hole?
What I'm showing up on the screen is a screenshot of the Woods Hole mapping. So this tile up here that I have, this is the still water elevation, generally in the High Park area. I just have one polygon clicked on the screenshot that shows a 13.1 elevation. So this is the Woods Hole Group tile. And then this is the Woods Hole Group wave crest tile, that's that, one of the two secondary models that Deb mentioned, that shows the difference in elevation. So these are all from Woods Hole Group mapping.
So my question is, how often do they update their maps? Is this, was this in the response to the FEMA forums, or, or do they just do this?
I, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, because I know that Woods Hole Group has been involved in multiple projects for the city. Deb, you might know a little more, but this was mapping that we knew that was available and also the project, and this data that Woods Hole Group made available to us. And I understand that Woods Hole Group has worked with the city in various capacities. So I, these particular models, I'm unsure if they're going to, they need to be updated in the future, but we can certainly ask that question and follow up.
So then how about this, how often are FEMA flood maps? Those are the insurance.
Rather regularly.
Rather.
Regularly, so not, not quite often.
Oh, irregularly.
Irregular, sorry, yeah. So it's highly unlikely. One of the things that's necessitating this, the FHOD update, is a change in the FEMA mapping, and it's been quite some time since we've seen those. The FEMA maps can be amended, and if I jump back a few slides. So this is the actual FEMA tile, so this is not Woods Hole Group mapping, but we see here L-O-M-R, letter of map revision. So there is a discrete revision of this in 2017. And one of the responsibilities of the city under the flood hazard overlay district, which is again a FEMA compliance standard, is that the flood plan administrator is the record keeper for these changes. So they function as the liaison between the flood office and the city, essentially. So the FEMA maps can change, they can be interrogated as new data is available, but I think that they're, it's a little bit apples to oranges when we're comparing the two in terms of the frequency, because Woods Hole Group is, again, a private entity, and FEMA is the federal government, but I think it's useful to have all available to us. It's a really great question, though. Thank you. So if there are no further questions on the mapping, we do have time for open discussion. I'd like to invite any questions from the council.
I'm, sorry, I just had two, probably a couple of quick questions. What does conditional use mean?
Conditional use?
There was one of this, I think, accessory, the use.
Oh. So a conditional use means?
Catalent.
Yeah. So it could be allowed, but it's not allowed by rights. So it's allowed through a permitting process with certain conditions in the case of parking, if the planning board is so willing to permit a structure like that. The act would have the burden of not improving that, it would adversely impact the area, but also they provide some manner of floodproofing. So it's conditioned in the permitting process, not necessarily by rights. Good, good question.
And speaking of that permitting process, why was the decision for the waivers to be for the planning board versus like, it's only a court of the hills or waivers that would permit?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question. We, there was an earlier iteration of this, which envisioned both the zoning board and the planning board process, but I believe that a lot of permitting for the flood hazard of the overlay district currently is already existing in the realm of the planning board. So rather than kind of having another point of departure in having a bonus file for zoning variance, which in some regards can be a more complex land use endeavor, we're kind of keeping it consolidated as part of the planning board process. And I don't know, Tom, do you have anything you want to add to that? If not, no, so, yeah.
And then there's a secret question, President Markle. Thank you, President Stott. I had two very good questions, and the third question, just from the new construction or substantial renovation. What was substantial renovation, so 50% of?
I think, I don't want to misquote the building code, but I believe it's 50% the assessment value of the structure.
Assessment value, okay, that makes sense. Value of the structure.
It's in the definition section too, of ordinance.
Okay, great. And the Chapter 91, the Public Waterfront Act, those are state, state.
Right, yeah. So we wouldn't have any of these, so the zoning ordinance that would try and.
Right, it would conflict. Right, couldn't conflict with that. And my other question is regarding the historic properties and the information about the waiver. Since this is basically for, you know, new construction or very, you know, substantial renovations, what circumstances would a historic property, would this ordinance affect it? I just wasn't sure whether that would fall under, you know, that, because generally historic properties in historic districts are substantially benefiting or changes? Just curious.
I think that it wouldn't be so surprising for the cost of doing some internal renovation in a historic structure to creep up to that 50% threshold, too difficult, especially if the historic structure itself is a multifamily house that's in use for residential occupancy. There's a lot of historic structure in Salem that might not be, might not be what we would consider historic with a capital H, like cultural sites that are currently functioning as like public parks and things like that, but are privately owned, things like that. And there are some scenarios where homeowners want to do improvements to their houses, but anybody now in the construction industry can attest to the rising costs and how that conflicts with the assessed value. But I'm just taking a stab at that question. I would like to think about it a little more carefully because I think it's a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor.
Thank you, President Stott, for you, Mr. Gorman. Thank you.
I'm sorry, do we have space each other?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Space, you may.
Thanks, I did just want to chime in quickly on that question, which is a good one by thousands. I tweeted the preservation, the sale of the changing climate. There were some great examples at that conference that Tom was at as well, where there were some historic, the capital H, properties undertaking renovations that some were specifically undergoing for resiliency purposes. And certainly those renovations would have exceeded that substantial threshold as well. So I think to answer the point, construction costs, everything, it's surprising how quickly you can get up to that threshold. And I think there are, at least have been in recent years, some historic property owners that have been interested in making their properties more resilient and that likely enough triggering this as well because of the cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Stott, for you, Mr. Gorman. Just had a quick question about the, like, really fresh as far as residential units, five units or fewer. And after seeing the map, it seems like, you know, a lot of properties in that zone are fewer than five units or more. I guess since you guys have been known for the working group, are you able to explain why you guys are trying to make sure it's just five minutes or more, just to provide concerning the substantial renovation? Yep, so there are a few temptations that we're looking at and form this decision-making process. First is generally consistency with what triggers the site plan review filings in the city of Salem, specifically the five residential units or fewer. And as a councilor's role, we probably attest to, we've also discussed quite a bit, and it's not off the table yet, whether or not there is some type of structural law or gross floor area threshold that is also working into this table that is below the five-minute threshold. So that is not necessarily off the table yet, but this is sort of the direction that we're proposing right now. And that, I think, generally answered the question. Once we have more deliberation for working here, Tom, do you have something to add?
If I can chime in, too. There's been a deal of deliberation about the path of the old age threshold, the working group. The hope is to have the ordinance that does not have the unintended consequence of stopping people from investing in properties, especially smaller property owners. So if we were to require one, two, we're saying three, residential buildings to title the ordinance, and I do burden on some of those, they're newly owned. There's also whole neighborhoods that are still historic, I think a lot of them are where there is some value in the way the buildings connect to the streets that could be lost with retrofitting, existing goals versus sustainability. I think that's another concern, just waiting on my notes here. And I guess going back to my thoughts at the beginning, where this is just one tool that's not going to solve all of our flood resilience problems. So another approach that goes hand in hand with this is district-wide neighborhood resiliency projects where we will build berms and seawalls and make neighborhood drainage improvements to reduce flood risk. And maybe just philosophically, yeah, we require the larger projects to all comply with ordinance and invest for resiliency, but there's going to have to be some community investment from all levels of government in public projects to protect some of the smaller properties. At the same time, what I've heard from folks at CERC who, to be honest, they'd like to see no exemptions to this ordinance, but the fact I have is, any property that's going to be exempt from the ordinance, they should be the target of education outreach that promotes sustainability, I'm sorry, specifically flood resiliency. Because all properties should be encouraged in flood resiliency.
Awesome, no, thank you for that explanation. I just, you know, think that, you know, I'd rather not just like check off the box, like we're doing what we can, but I think that with residential properties of five units or fewer, like, I do really, I think that there is emergency because of the point of them. I just, I understand that, you know, this is not off the table, you guys are looking into it. So, no, that, I, thank you that it's, I know this is a very complicated recommendation on this, so, thank you. Thank you.
And further comments with the council chambers or remotely? Very sorry, did you have something to ask?
Oh, just chamber.
I will also open it to your public comment. If you're attending remotely and you'd like to make a comment, please use the same right-hand function. Okay, I don't see any other comments. Any other comments or questions around the committee? Do we have an ETA on when we might possibly be standing in draft presentation, Council? It was probably a hard time last year.
Very soon.
Very soon.
Our goal was to pack last year. We take the time that we need to work through all the details of a complex ordinance like this. Just thinking about February, maybe the fall, we need to do some legal review of anything that we bring forward. The minimum FEMA compliance part that we submit to the public safety department office, so we probably need to do a little more deliberation in the working group for, let's go over some of the feedback we're getting tonight and some of these decision points that are not fully resolved yet. So maybe the fall.
Okay, and sometimes I ask that question and you're like, next week, every day. And sometimes, so just wanted to get an idea. And then what are the next steps for public engagement? Are there any more or planned public engagement, like forums that you always hold with the great education pieces, or is that complete and now we're just working on the details and a little bit review?
I know we've done some gold standard ordinance processes. We've had many, many public forums, the weapons ordinance. I guess I would say we've had one good public forum and we've been at other public forums like this, CERC, where we haven't actually been here explaining it right now publicly, there's not a chance of helping, but I would, I think, try to make the case that there's so much climate education outreach happening right now. So one public forum for this project is really connected to, builds upon, and everything else we're doing. But that said, I, I'm interested in the sense that you guys have for what if there's more listening in. I know when we bring forward the draft ordinance, we'll have another public hearing, we'll be talking here with the planning board and the council. But I guess I want to give the right outreach, definitely not too little, but not too much when we have multiple climate picks going on, a little game for all those working, so I can have to.
No, I honestly, I personally agree. I think you're on the right track. I just wasn't curious if there was like being other ones scheduled, but it sounds like the next step is submitting an ordinance and creating a little process from that. But I guess interested to hear if there's, if there's. Sounds good to me. Anything further? If, President, I move that we refer this back to the council with the recommendation, the presentation for your state file. Sorry. Councilor Marsillo moves to refer this back to council with the presentation received and files. Seconded by, thank you, by Councilor Verella. And we are remote, so we will need to do a roll call vote. So councillors may, councillors have worked their voting on just to send this, to remove the matter from committee. We're not, we obviously don't have the ordinance in front of us, so we're sending it back to committee to receive and file the presentation that was presented. I hope that this is, if I read this again, we will have that with us, that's a committee for discussion. Actually, a quick question on that. So that will be a zoning ordinance, right? So that's a public, that's the whole zoning process. Okay, thanks. And we will roll call vote, Councilor Marsillo?
Yes.
Councilor Markoff?
Yes.
Councilor Verella?
Yes.
Councilor Hatford?
Yes.
And Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
And myself is yes. That is six in favor. Six in favor. Matt or Caris?
Thank you so much.
And Councilor Verella?
Thank you, Rob, for the presentation. Appreciate your time. But I had a motion to adjourn.
Councilor Verella moves to adjourn because we are remote and we'll need to do a roll call vote. Can't Councilor Marsillo?
Yes.
Councilor Markoff?
Yes.
Councilor Verella?
Yes.
Councilor Hatford?
Yes.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
And myself is yes. On that, we are adjourned at 7:40. Thank you very much all for attending. Have a good night.